Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the May 21st, 2014 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We have no changes to the agenda.
No, sir.
Move for approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I think we have a few reports from our committees. Comprehensive plans, Mr. Moan?
Yes, Madam Chair. We met last week on the 12th, and our only agenda item was a discussion of the McCann Slaughter Comprehensive Plan Amendment application, which is on our agenda for discussion this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Unger, sanitation sort of?
Yes, ma'am. We met last night. The operations got a total customer base of water of 14,077, sanitary of 13,592. Rainfall for last month was 3.06, which was about average. It was down a little bit, but that was real good. But I think this month will make up for that more so. The water production from the Deal plant, we drew 2.7 million gallons per day. The Anderson plant, we drew 1.7 million gallons per day. And the reason we're not pulling as much water out of the Anderson plant is they have a pump broke down over there, and they've got two of them, and one of them's not operating properly, so they're pulling less out of that and more out of the Deal. They purchased 0.74 million gallons per day from the city. Daily average is 5.18, which is fairly normal for this time of year. The Deal quarry is down about a foot, but still looks real good. The Anderson quarry was up about a foot, which is because we're not drawing a lot of water out of it. And at the Parker's Mill plant, the sewer plant, the only problem we're having over there is we're still having some nitrogen, and CBOD is still a little high because food's still putting more nitrogen to us than what they should be, so they're trying to get that corrected. And they, yesterday they had election of officers. They did keep the same people in. They did add a new member, Mike Komdoff. He took Richard Ruckman's place. Richard is not, no longer with them. And as far as leaks, they're about 8% on their leaks in the water, which is pretty good. It usually runs around 10 to 12, so we're doing pretty good on the leakage. And they got a test well now at Clearbrook they've been pulling water out of, and when they pump it real hard, they're getting mud out of the bottom of it, so it's not producing as the way they was hoped it would. And that's all we have.
Sir, thank you very much. Let's see, I believe Mr. David Smith from the City of Winchester Planning Commission.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman. In our last meeting, which was yesterday, we discussed conditional use permit for conversion of ground floor non-residential use to residential. We've been getting a lot of those lately. The Winchester SPCA for conditional use permit for animal shelter. Conditional use permit for extended stay in Old Town. And the biggest thing that we're discussing right now is amendment to our Comprehensive Plan, which is going to be discussing the new John Kerr Elementary School. And we have an open house on that tomorrow evening at City Hall on the fourth floor, if anybody's interested in coming to it. So they'll be answering a lot of questions for people.
With all that, thank you. Thanks for being with us. This is the time on our agenda that we ask for citizens who are here, who would like to speak to us regarding anything on the agenda, with the exception of the planning, excuse me, the public hearing will take care of that on its own. But if you've got an idea, or a thought, or something you'd like to share with us, this is the time to do it. Anyone? All righty, we will close the citizen comment portion. Our first item is a public hearing, and it is, the title of it is "UDA Centers in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan." We're going to discuss a proposed amendment to that plan, the Frederick County UDA Centers and the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, I believe is the title. This amendment is a follow-up to and in support of the UDA Center Design Cabinet Report and the draft, excuse me, Traditional Neighborhood Design Ordinance Discussion. I'm going to leave it to Mr. Mike to fill in all the details.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I'll go through this presentation in relative detail. I know we've been involved with it for quite a period of time, and through its different iterations, but I think it's important to recognize that tonight we're just talking about one amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and that's UDA Centers and the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. It was initiated by the Comprehensive Plan Committee as a result of all of those discussions that we've been having, to hopefully clarify in the Comprehensive Plan in one location what we're talking about with these UDA Centers. As you mentioned, two items that were floating out there was the UDA Center Report, which was done by a group of individuals who were looking at the potential in the locations that have already been identified, and the Traditional Neighborhood Design Zoning Ordinance that has been in the works for a while, that of course would implement this stuff, allowing the things that we're hearing people are looking to do in the county's urban areas to actually be achieved. A little of the recent chronology, the Planning Commission, you guys held a discussion of this at the retreat back in February. The Comp Plan then had their discussion in March, and ultimately endorsed it, expressing support for the overall effort. And then back through April of this year, the Planning Commission, we had a discussion, and then it reached a bit of a mile mark, it went to the Board of Supervisors, and during their discussion item, they endorsed moving this through the public hearing process, which I think is a big step. And that's where we are tonight for a public hearing on this particular amendment. There's a little bit of narrative, because some questions were asked before about the why and the who, and there's a little bit of discussion about that, but obviously why. The UDA Centers are a very important part of the overall growth management strategy for the county within the urban areas. They're located at some very strategic points to make the most of those urban areas. And who is it for? It's for residents, both current, future, whether that's recent graduates, recent retirees, many of the folks that make up our business development workforce, so it's for a variety of county residents, both past, present, future, young and old. And it's intended to provide a variety of different housing types that suit their needs and provide, in addition, affordable housing opportunities, but a variety of housing choices. So the intent is that with the implementation of UDA Centers, that all of those needs will be met in one package. The amendment itself, UDA Centers and the Comprehensive Plan, I'm just going to hit on the three main policies that are in the agenda and a part of the public hearing this evening. First one is that as Frederick County continues to grow, it's essential that the vision of the Comprehensive Plan for the urban areas meet the expected growth of the community in a sustainable manner. And again, that that growth should be focused within the county's urban areas. Again, that's beneficial, of course, to the county as a whole, in particular, the rural areas. Second policy is that the more intensive development should be focused in the UDA Centers, again, particularly meeting the residential needs of the young adults, the retirement generation, and the workforce needed for business development. And finally, that those UDA Centers should be located at strategic locations within the urban areas, and should absorb a portion of the anticipated community growth with the maximum efficiency and effectiveness. That's the policy. There are a variety of implementation steps that are also included in the amendment. But of course, we know that the UDA Centers in the urban areas is a discussion that goes through the current Comprehensive Plan. It's in there in many, many locations. This particular amendment seeks to put it in one spot, to call it out, and to reinforce the county's planning efforts with regards to urban areas. To help kind of boil it down, after the agenda went on out, staff put together just a little presentation, and hopefully you've got that in the mailing, that went out to the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, and just a little narrative, if you will, describing and illustrating UDA Centers, and what this particular amendment is. And of course, it's an amendment that consolidates and reinforces all of the discussion we've been having within the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and to, again, further strengthen those sound planning principles that we have within the county's urban areas. We've talked about what UDA Centers are, we know what they're envisioned to feature, what they potentially could be, so that was included there, too. And what we also tried to do was illustrate through pictures some of those successful examples that other communities are doing throughout the Commonwealth, and of course the Mid-Atlantic, but of various scales, various elements may well work here in Frederick County. So for purposes of illustration of what a UDA Center could be, we, again, provided some examples. One on the screen to your left right now is West Broad Village down in the Henrico County area. Another example is Land's Downtown Center, not too far away across over off of Route 7 in Loudoun County. And the final one, some components there of the villages at Leedsburg, particularly some of the commercial and some of their multifamily housing choices. Again, examples that tend to hopefully illustrate what could occur in Frederick County, a manner that's appropriate for Frederick County, and of various different scales, just again to illustrate what we're talking about here, the UDA Centers and the Comprehensive Plan, a simple amendment that reinforces what's already in the Comprehensive Plan in one On the screen to your left there is what we mentioned before, the UDA Center Design Cabinet Report and the draft Traditional Neighborhood Development District Ordinance. So as we move this present amendment through, the intent is very clearly to bring those through to, in the upcoming months, to put on the books the tools that are needed to hopefully have these things be implemented by the people we hear are looking to do so here in Frederick County. Again, the big milestone was at the recent Board of Supervisors meeting, when it was directed to move this amendment through the public hearing process where we're at this evening. And following the public hearing, we're seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'd certainly be happy to try and answer them and illustrate any outstanding points.
So, Mr. Ruddy?
Madam Chairman?
Sir?
I would support this. I think what this does, this takes us to the next level. The county has already identified those areas where they want growth to occur, their urban areas, and then this amendment gives greater flexibility, I think, as far as how these areas are to be developed. I think it offers great, really great design flexibility, in regards to various types of housing, intermixed with commercial and so forth, that could help to create a community and areas of the county, in the areas of the county, excuse me, that is walkable and sustainable, and I think really would offer opportunities for people of all ages. It's noted in the report that Frederick County has liked to keep some of the youth, and it is also a growing area of retirees, myself included, and I could see where something like this would give me an opportunity to go somewhere else in the county in the event I want to downsize. So I think this is really good, a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments to Mike? Questions? I have one, Mike, and it's just back here someplace. I know during all the time that we have discussed this, there was some sense that this particular effort is not one that's going to be accomplished in a short period of time, and somehow or another, it would please my heart if somewhere in this, maybe under future focus, and I don't suggest we change it, but we should say that this is something that is a really long-term proposal for the county. That would...
Definitely, and I think with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan certainly looks out a good number of years, but...
Beyond that?
As we know, when we did that, it goes beyond that time period.
Anybody else? Roger?
No. Madam Chair, if there's no other comments, I was going to recommend that...
We have a public hearing to hold. It's okay.
Slow down.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this amendment? Sir, if you'll give us your name and magisterial district, please.
Yes, Allen Marston, Gainesboro District. When I read this in the paper, something jumped out at me that bothered me. They want to strengthen sound planning principles. I would have assumed that our planning department would have been doing sound planning principles all along. When you have to reiterate your core function in the document that you are stating, it makes me wonder if they are trying to convince themselves or to convince us, understanding that we have to have a countywide plan and work on it, and that we're looking at some of the things that universities are teaching as the best way, such as sustainable, and all the key drop words that we always want to consider. The other one is stack and pack, drive the citizens into the reservation, lock the gates behind them, and that may be what is necessary in the future. My biggest concern really comes when we are no longer allowed to live the lives we have chosen simply because it no longer fits the mold that our sustainable planning has made as our primary objection. Are the citizens of Frederick County being led to the path where they will have to give up freedoms and liberties just to maintain this high-density, highly efficient, as stated, housing model? That's not the model that most people moved to Frederick County and have lived in Frederick County for many years have chosen, and it's going to be a dramatic and fundamental change to the way that the county people are asked to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us on this issue? Well, seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing. Now, sir?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for the UDA Centers and the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Unger?
Unger, ayes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, no.
Manuel, no.
Crockett, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Triplet, no.
Don Lab, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 25th. Okay, that's June, isn't it? Yeah, the 25th of June. Our second item is regarding the establishment of a new agricultural and forestal district in the Greensprings Agricultural and Forestal District area. The proposed district contains 385.63 acres within two parcels, and is located in the Gainesboro Magisterial District, fronting Glaze Orchard Road, Route 682 to the south, and Greensprings Road, Route 671 to the east. Mr. Chirron?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, this is a new ag and forestal district, as Chairman pointed out, is going to be known as the Greenspring Agricultural and Forestal District. The zoning properties around this proposed ag district are all rural areas. If I could turn your attention to the map on your left, outlines the two properties for this proposed creation of an ag and forestal district. The properties are located, I can't get the, let me see if I can get the lower map there on the county map, kind of shows you where it's located in the county, give you familiarity of the area. The Ag and Forestal Committee actually had a meeting on the April 24th, 2014, to discuss the addition to the Ag and, for these two properties, to the Ag and Forestal District. They unanimously recommended that these two properties be forwarded for inclusion to the Frederick County Ag and Forestal Districts. Staff, the staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on the creation of this new Ag and Forestal District, be known as the Greensprings Ag and Forestal District. I'll answer any questions you or any of the Planning Commissioners may have on this proposed new Ag and Forestal District.
Questions to Mr. Chirron? Well, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this addition? Anyone at all? Seeing none, I guess perhaps we'll have a vote.
I do, am I?
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the new ag and forestal districts, Greenspring Agricultural and Forestal District.
Second.
Mr. Moan, would you start us off, please?
Moan, ayes.
Don Lab, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Malden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, ayes.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Unger. The chair votes yes, and this will go to the Board of Supervisors on May the 28th. Our next item is also dealing with agricultural and forestal districts, and in addition to the South Timber Ridge District. The proposed addition contains a total of 85 acres within one parcel, and is located in the Gainesboro Magisterial District along Hollow Road, Route 707 to the north, Muse Road, Route 610, and Gold Orchard Road, Route 708 to the east. Mr. Chirron?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Again, members of the Planning Commission, I think we're pretty familiar with the South Timber Ridge Ag District as one of our newer districts. This is an addition, as you pointed out, of 85 acres and some parcels. The zoning, of course, on these property's are rural areas, as zoning, adjoining properties are. Turn your attention to the map on the left. The property is outlined, of course, in black. The colored outline properties are the current ag district as it stands today, the Southern, or South Timber Ridge, I should say, Ag Forestal District. This is up near the West Virginia line off of about 50, kind of give you an idea where it's located at. Again, the Ag and Forestal, or Ag District Advisory Committee, or ADAC, recommended unanimously approval of this addition to the South Timber Ridge Ag and Forestal District at its April 24th, 2014 meeting. Staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on the addition of this 85 acres to the South Timber Ag and Forestal District. I'd have to answer any questions that you, any of the Planning Commissioners may have on this addition to South Timber Ag and Forestal District. Thank you.
Questions to Mr. Chirron? Don't see any. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this addition? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the addition to the South Timber Ridge Agricultural and Forestal District.
Second.
Mr. Unger?
Unger, ayes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Don Lab, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also goes to the Board of Supervisors on May the 28th. Our next item is a public hearing item. It's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning article, eight development plans and approvals, Part 801, master development plans, section 165.801, excuse me, dash 801.03, dealing with waivers. It is to allow a waiver of the master development plan requirement if an applicant chooses to process a detailed site plan in lieu of a master development plan. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a proposed addition to the master development plan requirements. It gives the opportunity for applicants to process a detailed site plan in lieu of a master development plan. It really just takes out a step in the process if an applicant knows exactly what they plan to do with their property. Many of you may remember this waiver addition is in response to the Business Friendly Committee recommendations that came out in 2012. The DRC reviewed the master plan requirements at their October 2013 and January 2014 meetings, and they forwarded recommendation for the waiver option. The Planning Commission discussed this on April 2nd, and the board on April 23rd, and at that meeting, the board sent it forward to public hearing. So tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions to Mrs. Perkins? All righty, this also is a public hearing item. Would anyone like to speak to us regarding this? All righty, I think it's time we made a decision here. Folks?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend a master development plan waiver approval to the board.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Moan?
Moan, ayes.
Don Lab, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Malden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, ayes.
And the chair votes a yes. This goes to the board on May the 28th as well. Our next item is an information and discussion item for the commission, and it is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a discussion on what is known as the McCann Slaughter property. It is a draft amendment to the Northeast Land Use Plan and an area plan contained within Appendix 1 of the 2030 Comp Plan, and is presented to the Planning Commission as a discussion item. Mr. Ruddy, would you like to fill us in on the details?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. On the screen to your left is a map that is a locational map, which was passed along with the resolution from the Board of Supervisors directing us to move forward with studying this area. It's approximately 160 acres of the McCann Slaughter property. You can see it's identified predominantly with brown, a brown land use designation and a brown hatch, and that designates that it's a DSA, a developmentally sensitive area. It was identified as such because it has environmental high run running through the property, a lot of associated floodplain. In addition, there's historical components on this property. Stevenson's Depot is in the general area, and was identified through some National Park Service studies, and probably most significantly through the Battlefield Network Plan, which is in your agenda, in the northern part of the property, north of the existing environmental features, connecting to Melbourne Road and the Melbourne Road corridor, and you can see the brown off to the east and to the right-hand side of the screen, and really reinforcing the existing conservationism and the historical character of that area. So the request was to reevaluate the property that's highlighted, to see if it should, the land use designation should change to something to allow some sort of development to occur. The applicant had requested an OM land use designation, which is an office manufacturing land use designation for the property, while still recognizing the developmentally sensitive areas that were truly identified, the environmental features such as the floodplain, and the identified Stevenson's Depot primary and secondary areas. You can see also on the property, south of McCann's Road, the larger piece of property is bisected by future Route 37. And south of Route 37 is already identified with an industrial, an M1 land use designation. So really, we're talking, of course, about the area north of future Route 37, on both sides of McCann Lane, approximately 160 acres, that is east of Route 11 North and south of Old Charleston Road. So as I kind of go through what we're envisioning here, we know that the applicant had made the request, the Board of Supervisors supported the evaluation of the land use study, and the Comprehensive Plan Committee worked in conjunction with the Historic Resources Advisory Board, who also reviewed this particular request on a couple of occasions, to come up with an approach to the future land use for this. And very clearly, it was the intent of the Comprehensive Plan Committee to come up with a balanced approach, which looked at the future land uses, but also recognized those items identified as developmentally sensitive areas. And in doing so, you see as part of your agenda package, we have an updated map, which I'll jump on here in a second, and some text that would be put into the Northeast Land Use Plan. The proposed balanced approach to the Northeast Land Use Plan, I'll go through some of the points right now that are identified, that's the protection of the environmental features of the site, preservation of those areas identified with DSAs, and development limited to those areas to the south of the identified DSAs and south of McCann's Road, utilizing McCann's Road and other historical features, such as Melbourne Road, as features to be protected and potentially used in a manner that promotes their historical context, such as an extension of the historical trail network that's been envisioned up in that area with the Melbourne corridor and connecting, of course, down to Third Winchester Battlefield, by designating it with an OM, a mixed-use office industrial land use designation in those areas where development would be appropriate, making sure that... those areas where development would be appropriate, making sure that access would be provided via a new north-south road that would generally be parallel to the west side of the existing railroad tracks, the road would connect into proposed development to the south, there's one point of access to the north right across from the entrance that's approved with the Cut Shore Development and the Bishopumari Project on the north side of Old Charlestown Road. A key component is that no access would be permitted to McCann's Lane for vehicular access to Martinsburg Pike or Melbourne Road, again, to ensure that the character of that maintains a bicycle pedestrian component. The map that is on the screen to your left is a cleaner rendition of what you have in your agenda. I'll just touch on that briefly here in a moment, but as you can see, there's certainly a defining line internal to the property. Point on that here if I may. And that is, in this general location, obviously, is, south of that location is the area in which development may be appropriate, and north of that area is the developmentally sensitive area, the floodplain, the creek, and of course, some of the historical components. So if I cancel out of that a second and just identify Stevenson's Depot, which is in your agenda, of course, from the Battlefield Network Plan, but that identifies this area as being a primary part of the Stevenson's Depot historical Civil War action, and then, of course, the Melbourne Road corridor being a key component of that. So that area, of course, as you can see with this request, is balanced with the development and is still maintained, and it still allows the Melbourne Road historical sensitive area and the conservation area to the east to be maintained. The one thing that the Comprehensive Plan Committee wanted to do in recognition of the HRAB's involvement and their recommendation, which was not to change any of the land use there, and that was primarily based upon not having presented with additional information that would really warrant the changing of the designation. Members of the Planning Committee felt it would be appropriate to reach out and see if that could be balanced or refined even more. So we had a little bit more of a discussion at our Comp Plan Meeting last Monday evening to look at some of those other points that could be included in the text to make that land use and developmentally sensitive area balance work to a better level, to be more sensitive, if you will. So some additional points were noted, and that includes providing a small area of supporting commercial land use, providing interpretive wayside parking at the north end of the road, which could be done in conjunction with a commercial, providing a buffer zone between the DSA and OM land uses with those environmental BMPs and site design elements that could go somewhere within that general area. Again, the BMPs, environmental BMPs certainly could be within the environmental area, and some historical signage being examples of additional points. Again, we wanted to look into it a little bit further and reach out, and last Wednesday afternoon, a couple of members of the Comp Plan Committee met with a couple of members of the HRAB and provided some additional points that could be incorporated into the text. So what was handed out in your agenda, excuse me, on your dais here this evening, was what you have in your agenda plus some additional points that were discussed and thought to be appropriate during that meeting. And so with that and with those additional points and interpretive elements and minimal impact guidance, you know, we kind of hope that that will be satisfactory as it moves forward, again, this proposed change in the Northeast Land Use Plan. What the intention would be, would be to just inform the CPPC and the HRAB about the enhancements to that and continue to move this forward to the Board of Supervisors for their discussion and input. On the screen to your left is the excerpt I was mentioning from the Battlefield Network Plan, which, as I kind of zoom in into this area, is the closest thing we have to truly identifying those areas where Stevenson's Depot, the primary and secondary areas are. And I think, as you'll note from the map that we just looked at, that's pretty consistent with what is being proposed. The other part of the Battlefield Network Plan, that is a longstanding county document with a strategy for Stevenson's Depot, again, is to work to preserve key areas while allow for some planning, for some development, making sure that view sheds and the development and the core areas protected, and again, reinforcing Melbourne Road as that connection between Stevenson's Depot and Third Winchester. Hopefully, the balance has been achieved, and certainly, that was what the Comp Plan Committee was looking to do. So the amendment to text form is in front of you, the map there is on the screen, it's the latest, and at this point, we'd be looking for some additional input, if any members of the Planning Commission has it, to hopefully make this product even more balanced and more appropriate as it moves forward.
Any comments from Mr. Roddy?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
This is a very interesting topic because of the many geographic, environmental, historical aspects, and a lot of those aspects compete with each other, competing interests, but there's been an awful lot of discussion between all the stakeholders, Comp Plan, historical folks, environmental folks, and I believe that they have come up with, to use my word, a pretty reasonably balanced approach for the use of this land. I think it's, they've done a pretty good job with it.
I just have one question, Mike. I noticed in the updated language, the buffer along McCann's Lane, you know, we talked about that last week, and I know it was a point of the follow-up discussion with the members of the HRAB, indicates 50 feet in width. Is that intended to be, you know, a total buffer corridor of 50 feet, like 25 feet on either side, or this language kind of implies 50 feet adjacent in whether it's side or one side?
That's a very good point. As we discussed that in more detail on Wednesday afternoon, 50 foot was really, again, from the center line, much as we talked about with the Comp Plan Committee, so it wouldn't be intended to be 50 feet on each side, it would just be approximately 50 feet from the center line. But I think more importantly, the discussion revolved around what type of buffering or screening or anything should be done in that area, and there was a recognition that just leave it natural, just basically ensure that there's no vehicular access up and down, so it maintains its current character in that area. While at the same time, there may be some areas, if new development is occurring on the north and south, that you could enhance that with some landscaping or some view shed to help work that out. While 50 foot has been discussed, and it would be roughly from the center line, I think the intent was to be very flexible with what that buffering would be in that particular area, to maintain the current character of McCann's Lane and to allow that to occur.
Okay, yeah, that, I think that makes sense, and it's a, I think, a good compromise. We just want to be sure that, you know, if we're talking 50 feet total, that we might want to clarify that it's 20, 25 feet on either side, measured from center line or something along those lines, just if it's going to be a minimum so that we don't get it misinterpreted as something more.
That's right. And over the initial document, the initial map that you have in your agenda showed quite a wide buffer against McCann's Lane, and we tried to shrink that down a little bit on the one here, but again, the intent is that that just shows that there is something special in McCann's Lane, and it's not intended in any way to prescribe, you know, 200, 300, 400 foot buffer along, along McCann's Lane. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Make sure I understand this, then, you're talking really 100-foot rideaway, essentially what that would be. 100 foot?
Sorry, no, it'd be 50 feet.
That's really nothing.
That's, that's correct. It's not very wide at all.
I mean, when you put the road on there, you're barely going off your ditch and stuffing aside, I mean, that's, what is the intent of that?
Yeah, there'd be no road improvement there. I mean, it's an existing gravel road within a prescriptive easement, so the idea would be to just preserve essentially that as a pedestrian bicycle trail in its current condition, really. Yeah, so it's preserving that 50-foot corridor in total is how I interpret it, and I think how that, it was discussed. It was a means of alternative access, you're really linking things up, you know, but again, it wasn't intended to be a wider, any wider than it needed to be really to facilitate, you know, that connection.
Is it okay with 50 feet?
The HRAB's recommendation was not to change the land use in any way, shape, or form. When we talked about that with members of the HRAB at our meeting on Wednesday, generally, there was support for all of the items that were listed there. The HRAB as a whole did not weigh in on that particular 50-foot example. Now, we will take it back, and we'll let them know what, you know, where the discussion has been going, but...
And I think the key thing, too, is that Melbourne Road is really the key element, you know, when you look at all the prior planning documents and everything, but I think, as Mike indicated, you know, from a HRAB perspective, the Comp Plan Committee really looked at it in terms of, you know, it's a compromise, you know, it's trying to preserve what's important, trying to get some, you know, balanced elements involved, but allowing, you know, the right form of development to go forward eventually as well. So, yeah, I think coming right out of the blocks, the HRAB wasn't happy, you know, with the overall proposal, but I think they ultimately accepted, you know, the compromise position.
From the HRAB, from the historical, the true historical Stevenson's Depot component, it was very definitely, you know, this area of the particular property was the primary location, and again, feeding into McCann's Lane and everything in this north-south direction. So, again, when we talked on Wednesday, the focus in this area was more significant than the, any historical Stevenson's Depot part discussion on McCann's Lane.
Good. Any other comments or questions? I think for process purposes, what staff did and the two committees is super, because you get along and you talk, able to come up with things that, you know, you have something, we have something, et cetera. So congratulate them for me, too.
We'll pass that message on. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Mike, you got enough?
Thank you very much, and thank you for participating in that group.
Yeah, I'll make it there in time for dessert.
Let's see, I think we're at the end of the agenda, and the only thing I need to share with you is that our June meeting will not be held, that's June the 4th, so we'll need to...
Chair, I move that we cancel the 4-June meeting. Second?
A motion to cancel the June 4th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We will be coming together on the 18th, so...
If I'm back over here, I may not be there.
So... Would you like to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
I'll call Jimmy again, he's not...